And it's the information and work session zoning appeal zoning appeals. Um, I guess Jeff kind of stares into that.
Yeah, so I put together a little presentation, see if I can make this work. So is everybody able to see the, say, planning commission and zoning board of appeals on your screen right now, blue background?
Yes.
All right, I've done it right. So put together just a few slides for this. Go ahead along the way if questions come up, feel free to to spout me and chime in, but um, the thought on this was kind of Christine's idea. Just given the fact that we don't get, you know, a special land use request every day or a site plan review every day. You know, the thought was maybe to do a little bit of background in what these different reviews involve. Um, the um, many storage requests that you had a couple of months ago from Mr. Gao involved uh, uh, variants that would need to go to the zoning board of appeals. So just kind of an overview of what what the two boards do in the context of zoning reviews. So, so this, I mean, you can do two hour presentations on this kind of stuff, which I'm not going to do. This is just sort of a a general, a fifty thousand foot view of what the two boards do. Um, kind of a quick review. Um, I'll go through the two boards, I'll go through some of the approvals. And um, and we can talk, discuss this, and if this format is good, you know, when we have light agendas like this, I'm willing to do other, other uh, programs or to dive into other parts of this if there's um, other questions. So kind of think about it in terms of what we're talking about tonight, if there's other, if this is beneficial to the board, there's other things you'd like to cover in topics like this, I'd be happy to do that. So it's going to be, like I said, a fifty thousand foot view of what the two boards do, and it's going to be in the context of development reviews. Specifically reviewing site plans, special land uses and variances, we kind of throw those terms out there when we've got these site plans in front of you. So we'll try to give some distinction between those. What, what parts of that does the zoning board of appeals review? What part of that is the planning commission review? And when you've got a request that goes before both boards, who should go first? What is the right order for that review? So, not to get too far into the weeds, but just so that we're all aware of it. Everything that we do in the city from a zoning standpoint, we do what, based on what are called enabling laws. We're only allowed to regulate how people use their property in the way that the state enables us to do it. So those are called enabling laws. And there's a couple of primary ones for, for the planning commission. The main one that we're going to cover tonight is, is the Michigan zoning enabling act. Um, it describes the uses that the city is allowed to regulate and how we're allowed to regulate it. It also provides some classes of uses that we're not allowed to regulate, that it says we must permit in our community under certain conditions. And it provides things like the public notice requirements that we have to use when we're notifying neighbors. And there's sections of the law that are drawn out for these two boards as well. So there's a zoning commission, which is article three of the law. Um, in our case, and this is common in, in most communities in Michigan, the zoning commission's responsibilities have been transferred to the planning commission. So you're a board that, that does both planning and zoning. But, but what you're allowed to do is, is prescribed in the law. And the zoning board of appeals is also, the reason we are allowed to have one is because that's prescribed in the law. So to break those boards down a little further in, in the context of our ordinance. What is the zoning board of appeals? They're called a quasi judicial board. All that means is that they hear appeals of rules and decisions. But it's done by people who are not judicial officials. So appoint, people who live in this community like you are appointed to that board. And they are allowed, and they are allowed to grant waivers to rules that are in the zoning ordinance. And their specific duties and powers are spelled out in the zoning ordinance in this section seventeen point oh three. What they're allowed to do um, is to review decisions and determinations of a zoning administrator about administration of the zoning ordinance. So if Mike Kaiser is our zoning administrator says, uh, you can't do, you can't put a movie theater in the industrial district and the property owner says, no, I think that the ordinance says that I can, or then, then they can appeal his decision. Um, sometimes ordinances are written in a language that's not real clear, so they can interpret provisions of the zoning ordinance. And then the main thing that they do is variances. Um, and a variance is just granting a waiver or a variation from the strict rules of the zoning ordinance. And there's two kinds of variances that they can consider. Use variances, so that's allowing a use that's not allowed in the district. So an example of that is the Grace Episcopal Church that was purchased recently. That building's in the residential district. It was not built as a residence, it was built as a church of special use in a residential district. It's not, it's got limited usability in that district, and so the applicant had a specific use they wanted to do there. They went to the board of appeals and said, this building is not suited for residential, can we do this use? And then the other one, they're generally called non-use variances, but really more commonly dimensional variances. And this is what the zoning board of appeals handles the most, I would say. Somebody wants to put an addition on their house. Uh, the, the building setback to the rear property line is twenty feet. They don't have twenty feet because of the way the lot lays out, the house sits on it, and so there, they will come to the board of appeals and say, can we put this as close as fifteen feet? And here are the reasons why. So, in terms of the approvals we're going to talk about tonight, uh, we'll be focusing on non-use or dimensional variances. Planning commission has a much broader uh, set of duties and powers, is spelled out in the city's code of ordinances. The basic thing in state law that I think the sentence that sort of summarizes the planning commission is that the, the state enabling act says, a zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan. So, there are two primary functions of the planning commission. One is to develop a plan for the orderly development of the city. And the other is to recommend ordinances to the city council that could make that plan happen. So putting into place, if, if the goal is to, for example, uh, change the character of downtown, uh, we decide we want every building in the downtown to have brick on it. So you would develop a plan, you'd get public input on that plan, and then if that's the goal of the plan, and the community says that's what's important, the planning commission then develops the zoning ordinances to follow that. In a lot of detail, um, your, your duties and powers are spelled out here. Again, broadly, this is, this is saying that you have the powers to do studies of your community, develop plans for the orderly development of the, of the community, review the plans and coordinate the plans with other parts of the, of other communities around us. Um, do annual reports and to be involved in budgeting and capital planning so that our uh, all of the cities, the city's objectives for development of its infrastructure line up with the way we're trying to encourage private development to happen. And then, again, the part of it that we're talking about tonight is drafting a zoning ordinance, uh, and amendments to it, and then specifically reviewing various zoning proposals. So again, everything that you do is based first on the state law, there's a set of local ordinances then that, that drill that down. And we'll, we'll zero in tonight on zoning proposals. So we'll jump back, now, now we're just going to clue right in on those three pieces. Uh, variances, dimensional variances approved by the zoning board of appeals, site plan reviews considered by the planning commission, and special land uses by the planning commission, and try and draw some distinctions between those three types of reviews. So, um, dimensional variances, as I said, these, these are kind of the common lists of the sorts of things that get reviewed in a, in dimensional variances. So often, it's either a varying from a measurement requirement. So, um, you've got a building, it's required to be thirty feet back, they want to build a porch on the front of this thing. And so they need a variance to that. Building height, as we prescribe the, the limits on height. There'll be unique circumstances sometime vary that height. Lot area, lot width. So the things that you can measure in the layout of a piece of, of a building and a development of a piece of property. And in the case of the ZBA, that can include residential or commercial, those things are reviewable. Also ordinance standards regarding quantities of things. So when you have a commercial property, you have to have a minimum number of parking spaces. Sometimes there are reasons why those standards can't be met, that's an issue that can be considered by the board of appeals. And the number and size of signs are also fair game. So an example, um, this is a, this is a city example, so the site plan, add a little color to it so that it's a little more visible what's going on. This is a site plan for a project that was proposed at uh, the Bailey Hodge Shire office on East Chicago. The dark brown is um, is a, is Greg Bailey's existing office. The light tan in the back is a building that was proposed to be built on the property. The gray area is both existing parking and uh, new parking that was proposed on the property. And the red lines show um, property lines. So in Greg's case, he, he had a pre-existing lot that was really unusual to the zoning ordinance. His, the lot behind his office did not have frontage on a public street, which is an unusual thing, not, not common, and certainly not something we would permit now, but something that was pre-existing to the ordinance. And it, and it was a small lot. Uh, but Greg was looking to build a, build a second office here so that he can move his operation to the back. Um, so he needed several variances in order to make this buildable. And he needed a rear setback, he needed fifty feet, he only had twenty-five feet, his lot was less than an acre. His lot width was less than two hundred and twenty feet, and he was doing construction on a lot with no frontage on a public street. So, why, if somebody just, if, if we've got an ordinance and we've got rules, under what circumstances do we make exceptions? I mean, Greg's the auditor of the city, so we just do it because Greg's a good guy and we like him and he's an auditor. Of course, now there are, there are standards for this. So, when the zoning board of appeals is approaching a request for variances, what they're looking for is practical difficulty, which is, is a term that needs some definition. And so the ordinance further describes those things uh, by, by other measures. So practical difficulty means that strict compliance would unreasonably prevent the landowner from using the property for a permitted use or would render conformity necessarily burdensome. So, it's a lot of words that tell you that there's a judgment call to be made here. So that's what makes, that's why there's a board that does this versus just saying, you know, staff saying yes or no. There's a judgment call that needs to be made, and so there's a group, the group of the board that's going to evaluate whether um, in strictly enforcing the ordinance is gonna, essentially what that's saying is going to make it so nothing can happen on this property. That's not the goal of ordinances, the goal of ordinances is to regulate the re, the rational development of property. They're not intended to um, to stop the ability to develop property. And so sometimes you need to grant relief for that circumstance. Um, again, another set of words that require judgment, relaxing the ordinance standard would provide substantial justice to the landowner and neighbors. Um, it's a little, you don't have to meet all of them, you have to meet some of them. Substantial justice is, is more of a, of the everybody in my neighborhood has the right to do something, and because of some characteristic of my property, I'm, I'm not going to get to do it. And so waiving the ordinance specific to my lot is going to make the difference. And, and this is the one, this third one is the one that comes up most times. The request is due to unique circumstances of the property and is not shared by neighboring properties. So in Greg's case, he had a lot of record, meaning a lot that existed before the ordinance was put in place. It was a small lot, it was divided, it was, it didn't have frontage on the street. So, so it, it, the lot on its own was unique and different than most of the others in the neighborhood. And then the last one is important, the problem is not self-created. So if Greg came along at some point, recorded a deed and split this thing without getting city approval, and then he's got all kinds of circumstances that he can't meet the ordinance, there's a safety valve there that says you don't, you don't get to make, make your problem so that you can then apply for a variance. So, again, it's, it's, there's a, there's a judgment call there, and it's the reason why you appoint a board to review the case so that they can discuss these things out. But the goal really is to um, grant these because there is uniqueness to the property, there's circumstances on that property. And administering the zoning ordinance on that property would be unreasonable. If the condition is that the zoning ordinance is unreasonable for all properties, really the right solution to that is to go to the planning commission and amend the ordinance so that the, so that the rules are applied better and more uniformly to all properties. Does that make sense? Hey, I'm going to move on to planning commission. So questions, thoughts on zoning board of appeals and variances?
Good, this is Jerry, could, could I ask one question?
Yeah.
Would, would there ever be a re, a reason why, even though those are two separate lots, that you could make it one lot, some, you know, as well, one full lot rather than than two separate lots?
You, you could. Um, in, in this case, what Greg was trying to do, he was outgrowing his office in the front. So he was trying to build a new office in the back, and he wanted to sell this to somebody else.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But the issue there was, yeah, the issue there was if you combine them together, that, then that created an ownership situation. We talked about situations of being able to combine them together. Um, and do, do essentially a condo development where the property would be owned jointly, but the buildings would be owned uniquely. Um, that didn't really fit the, the sales situation that, that Greg was going through. Um, and I would say Greg, Greg did get approval for this, but he ended up having soils issues back here that prevented him from building the building. So he had to go a little different route with it, but, but, but yes, yes.
Like that other, that other, that northern lot, Ben?
Sorry?
He can't, he can't use that north, they're not, I mean, because of the soil issues?
Correct. He ended up, what he ended up doing was building a storage building um, about here, which was a little bit smaller. So he'd been able to move some of his um, office uh, storage outside of the building into the, into the ware, little warehouse building. And now he's renovating the offices, reconfiguring those for office space. So he found another solution, uh, wasn't the first one that he wanted to do, but. But, no, that was a good question, Jerry, and, and it's part of, when the zoning board of appeals did their evaluation on that, it's part of the question they ask, is there a way, is there a way to combine this thing together? Have you guys each own the two buildings and um, you know, eliminate the issue?
I have one other question. Now, now, since he can't have that building back there, he can have a storage building. Now, will he need to have the, all that extra parking space?
No, no, he's, he has, the reason he was adding additional parking was to accommodate, you know, two offices.
Right, right.
He has enough parking up front to be able to accommodate the one office still.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thanks. Yep. Other questions on board of appeals? So planning commission, um, the planning commission reviews really two, kind of two different sorts of um, plans or two different sorts of approvals when it's reviewing plans. And they're kind of broken down in these two columns. And at the bottom here, one, one column leads to site plan reviews, and one column leads to special land use permits. And so those terms I'm sure are familiar because we've, we brought sort of the end product to you. Um, but what I've tried to show here in the table is, is examples of what is subject to site plan review in residential, commercial, and industrial districts? And what is subject to special land use review in residential, commercial, and industrial districts? So, for example, in residential districts, these are things that are considered, the, the typical things you would expect in the district. So a single family home and a, and a garage or shed and a home occupation are all things that are allowed by right. Special uses, what would be considered special in the district, but so more intensive use, but related, would be things like churches or duplexes or apartments. Churches are often proposed to be close to residential. Um, duplexes, um, in some cases are permitted on larger lots, but they, but they require a higher standard of review. So similarly and commercially, you, in our zoning ordinance, a store of less than fifty thousand square feet is a permitted use. A special use is a store greater than fifty thousand square feet because it will have greater stormwater impacts, greater traffic impacts. Um, and, and likewise through the list, offices as compared to car dealerships. A restaurant that has sit-down is by right, but a restaurant with drive-through traffic is going to be a special land use because of vehicle stacking and sounds coming from outdoor speakers, et cetera. And similarly in industrial, the normal things you would expect to see there, like manufacturing, research, and warehousing are allowed by right. And the um, there are more intensive uses like recycling and composting or engine repair or lumber yards that would be maybe a little more intensive, that would be special reviews. And so the distinction is that the permitted uses are site plan reviews and, and the special uses are special land use permits. I'll try in, in the next slides to explain those distinctions even a little bit further. But I wanted to know, there's a little asterisk down here, which is to remind me to tell you that residential uses by right, so a person wanting to build a house in the city of Johnsville on a residential lot, that does not come to the planning commission, that's reviewed by Mike i- in a zoning fashion. In any site plan that's for a construction of less than five thousand square feet in any of these categories, or that's a small addition, less than twenty-five percent of a building, those are also reviewed administratively. So, so there is, there are small, small commercial and industrial and office constructions that are reviewed by staff that don't, uh, don't have to come to planning commission. Let me see if I can give this a little bit more clarity, again, using the same columns to compare kind of the nature of the review and the public participation. So for all of those uses that are allowed by right, the nature of the review by the planning commission really is a checklist review. What you're doing in that case is verifying that, that all of the standards of the zoning ordinance are met. So parking, setbacks, it's, it's, it's a, it's a thumbs up or thumbs down proposition. Either the site plan meets the zoning ordinance or it does not meet the zoning ordinance. Which is contrasted in a special land use where there is more discretion by the planning commission. So and the reason for that is those uses, in some cases, of a hundred thousand square foot Walmart store in the middle of where it's at right now is going to have no impact on it's, it's completely consistent with the character around it, where if it were, you know, further north in town, backing up to a neighborhood, it could have an impact because of traffic and noise and trash and lights. And so you have more discretion uh, on a special land use uh, to consider the impacts on surrounding properties. And because of those differences, the public participation difference is that when you're reviewing a use that's allowed by right, that, that just takes place at one of your regular meetings. Those are open to the public, but we don't provide any specific notice out to anybody. When it's a special land use, the city is required by the state law to send notice to every property owner within three hundred feet, to put a notice in the newspaper, to hold an actual public hearing that gives the public an opportunity to speak on that particular agenda item at the time that it's considered by the planning commission. So, clear as mud, I'm sure, so let's, let's kind of do the same thing we did with board of appeals and look at some examples. So this is the Greenstone Farm Credit Services site plan. Um, and F ninety-nine is out here, uh, Old Street. They're building in tan, the parking and circulation here, property lines in red. Some of you will remember this.
Um, yes.
So this one is a site plan review, so the nature of the review is a checklist review. And that checklist is spelled out in, in the zoning ordinance. So what, what we are doing there is evaluating, is the application complete? Are all the things we require them to submit included? Is everything that's required on the plan shown there? And then we're evaluating, is the use allowed in the district? Is the lot properly configured? Are the setbacks, is the building set on the property in a way that it's far enough from front property inside and rear property lines? And then we're doing some of the development standards. Uh, do we, do they have all the parking spaces that they need? Do they have, are the signs the right size? Are they, do they have their dumpster enclosure shown? Whoop. Excuse me. Uh, so, um, i- i- is there, is the site lighting designed in a way that it's not going to trespass off the property? And then we're reviewing the public facilities to make sure that they've got water, sewer, storm sewer, that uh, emergency vehicles can get in and out of the property the way they need to, and there's traffic and circulation. So this is really going through the list and checking those things off. And typically, what, what we try to do as the staff is to do that review and to present to you in the staff report that we have reviewed those things. The, all of these things, all of them are met, or we try to call out the things that we know are, are not met, so that there can either be some discussion, or there can be some conditions placed so that the plan can be approved or approved with a condition to get modified so that it meets the review. When it comes to a special land use, and this is an example of that, this is the Big B uh, project, US twelve out here, the Big B property here. And then uh, stacking shown for vehicles, again, as opposed to a sit-down restaurant, a uh, drive-through restaurant because of the vehicle stacking, if that's not laid out right, you have the, the risk of um, vehicles stacking out into the street, or you've got um, audio um, ordering speakers that if there's a neighborhood and there's houses sitting right back here, there can be an impact. So you, you review, you review this one uh, with a little bit higher standard. You do still do the site plan checklist that you do for other site plan reviews, but there's a couple of other um, thresholds that these meet. So in section fourteen point oh nine of the zoning ordinance, every single one of these special land uses has a particular set of conditions called out for it. So, if we go to one section of fourteen oh nine for drive-through restaurants, you're going to get a list of five or six conditions that all drive-through restaurants have to meet. So, the checklist gets a little bit longer here in that we're making sure that they meet all the site plan standards, we're also making sure that they meet the standards that are specific to drive-through restaurants. And then you also have, and this is more of the, sort of the, the judgmental part of this thing. You also have standards that you can review with a special land use to decide, is this thing in this particular location, is this compatible in appearance in its design with everything else that's in the area? Is this drive-through restaurant, in our case, it's on East Chicago Street? You know, with a gas station and offices and it's in its context? Is, if, if uh, you know, this is all sit-down restaurants and um, not, not traffic oriented stuff, and you got a neighborhood that back, backs right up here, and the houses are all twenty feet from the property line, you might have some different thoughts on how this property ought to be laid out. So there's a judgment there. Uh, we're still doing the review to make sure it's served by public facilities. Um, does not involve activities detrimental to persons or property in the vicinity. Again, another judgment call about will this, can this use have some adverse effect on properties in, in the area? Um, and then lastly, is it compatible with the natural environment? So again, a kind of a set of judgment calls to be made that are specific to a special use different from a, a regular use. And you have the ability to place conditions of approval, and this in quotes, that uh, that are set up for the protection of the public interest. So again, there's a judgment call on your part about if, maybe the way it's proposed doesn't quite, is going to have some adverse effect on the property next to it. But if there was this condition, if uh, there's, again, if there was a house sitting right here and the applicant was willing to put a solid wood fence all the way along the property line that mitigated noise and light and that kind of thing, um, you can impose those kinds of conditions to make sure that this special use remains compatible with the properties around you. That was a lot of words, a lot of information in a short period of time. So before I move on to the next thing, questions on site plan, special land use?
Jeff, I have one question. Um, you got a site plan that's been approved. How does, I mean, okay, they, they put everything in, they had to do some changes. What's the checks and balances on that?
Um, typically, typically they're communicating with us along the way when they need to make changes. Um, there are circumstances where if they fail to do it, then we've got to go into an enforcement mode. So usually, usually what we would do is to make contact and to say, hey, there's a few things that are not, um, not finished on this plan and get us a timeline for wrapping those up. And hopefully you can work towards an agreeable schedule. If you can't, then, then the next arm is to go more into an enforcement mode, start assigning deadlines. And if you ultimately can't do it by assigning deadlines and getting some compliance, then our um, last uh, line of defense would be to start issuing um, citations to them for violation of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, but is there a, I mean, does, is that mechanism, does somebody do that? Where they go back through and look, okay, this is original site plan. I mean, for example, like uh, I remember the uh ramshackle, their, their sign was changing, and they didn't tell anybody. Um. What is the, you know, obviously that, I, I, I remember the, the specifics if it was, they brought it up or, or it was something in their site plan change? Or it was just, and, and I'm just using them, for example, and um, is there a mechanism that that actually happens every time?
No, I would say we, we do not have that built in. It's more, um, it's more on the basis of um, and Mike Kaiser can jump in here. It's more on the basis of, you know, Mike is the zoning administrator. He's also our DPW superintendent. He tends to be out, out and about. So it's more of a, you know, when that thing's going in and if we see it's going wrong, it, it raises at that point. We don't, we don't have it really built in to actually go out and do a um field inspection. Um, in, in past places that I've worked, um, the building, the building permits were issued in-house and that, that made it a lot easier to do what you're talking about because there was, because we had building, we had the building department inside of the city offices. So the building official, before the building gets done, there's a certificate of occupancy that gets issued. And when those departments are, you know, internal, you can, you can withhold that certificate of occupancy to get that compliance. Um, you know, I don't know if the building department wouldn't work with us in that way, but we don't have that kind of working relationship built right now, um, which would be maybe the next step to take if we were going to formalize an inspection, kind of a final inspection like you're talking about.
Yeah. But yeah, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be like a site plan Nazi or whatever you want to call. But I, I mean, in the engineering field, we do plan, do check, act. So you always check at the end and if, and make sure that it's in accordance with the site or what the original site plan, I guess. So Mike is the uh, kind of the first leg of that.
Yeah.
Cause he gets around.
You want to comment on that, Mike Kaiser?
Well, the only thing I, I remember on that part that that wasn't even on the planning commission review because they didn't know what sign he's putting up. So then they came back to me with, I don't know, multiple sign permits. And there's a few of them that we turned down. And then they came back with this and put this up, and then it's not really what was on the plans.
Right. Yeah, and, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not picking on ramshackle at all. I just, I know, just, I, I remember that incidence. But so there was a mechanism that Mike, that you participated with them going through. Okay. I just didn't know what the mechanism was or what's the triggers, you know?
Yeah, they, you know, often, often we will put conditions on, it's not unusual. I mean, in that case, they showed us a sign and then they brought us a permit for a different sign, but once you get your approval at the planning commission, you still have to pull permits. So most of these projects, they still have to come back to us and pull a sign permit. And that is a, a good spot where Mike typically will catch, you know, signs are coming in near the end of the project often. And so that is a spot where he will catch some of this stuff and say, that's not, that's not consistent with what you show on that. Forgot that that's how we came to it on ramshackle.
Another instance is uh Consumers Power. They just did theirs and it was two foot too high.
The building was?
No, their sign.
Oh, the sign, okay.
So they've got that finally figured out. And I proved it.
Okay. Other questions on site plan, special land use? Okay. Um, this slide is, are all site plans created equal? I mean, I know we bring to you um plans that look, look very different. Most of these that you see here are professionally drawn plans. Sometimes they're not as, as neat and, and clean as that. Um, I just want you to be aware that there are, there is a whole section of the zoning ordinance that talks about what is supposed to show up on a site plan. Um, I will tell you that um, sometimes the timing and the cost of getting a site plan done can be high. And sometimes a project does not factor in that they're going to have some time into getting the thing engineered. And so we do get a little bit of push sometimes from applicants to accept something less than a fully engineered set of plans. And we have not, I think honestly, we've not pushed hard back. We've tried to get the plans as close to this and sometimes have accepted things that maybe are a little bit less than this. Um, but what I would say is that the trade-off when people make the investment to the engineered set of plans, um, if you go back to, for example, the Citgo site plan that came to you recently, I mean, they had a very detailed set of plans. Um, I mean, I know they told you that other places they've gone to, they've had a hard time getting those plans through, even as detailed as they were. Every place I've been, which has been a smaller, a smaller unit of government, a smaller place to work and a place that we're trying to streamline development, when I get a complete set of plans like that, it's a lot easier for us to do the review and to say, yes, it meets all the requirements and to give you guys the information that you need to either do a, uh, an approval, you know, either without conditions or to, or to enumerate for you really clearly what the conditions are that need to be met. So I know that there's a, I know that there's sometimes a hill to climb to get this stuff done, e- either in terms of cost or time that can affect the project. But it, there, there also can be a trade-off if an applicant is getting, is getting uh, uh, is getting us all the information we need. And I mean, I just want to give you guys some permission that if you are getting plans submitted to you from us that aren't meeting all these standards and are not making it easy for you to do your job, to comment back to us to say, hey, we, we need something a little bit, we, we need the thing to be closer to what we're calling out in the zoning ordinance so that we have all the information. And it's okay, it's okay to remind the applicant sometimes too, when, when, because we try to be flexible and we try to take stuff in up to the very last minute, even though we've got deadlines. Um, it's, it's okay to push back a little bit and say, hey, this, you know, we're not getting, if you're not getting what you need in enough time to do a review, um, that we will not be offended by that. And, and I just want to let you know that there's a basis for that in the zoning ordinance. And so the last little topic I was going to cover before we wrapped up is when it comes to a site plan, I've got the GAL plan up here because that's the recent one that came to mind. You know, when you've got a site plan that has both variances involved in it, and in this case, this was a site plan and a special land use, who really, who should be going first on that? Um, the short answer is there's no requirement on this. But I will tell you what my, what my past practice has been, and I'll let you guys tell us, you know, where you'd like to be on that. Um, keeping in mind that the ZBA is a quasi judicial board in that they, they are, they're granting waivers to ordinance requirements, and you guys are reviewing the thing to see if it complies with ordinance requirements. I've generally had the zoning board of appeals go first so that when the planning commission is trying to go down the checklist and say, does this meet the standards? If there's one thing on this project that doesn't, like in this case, it was that the outside, outside storage wasn't going to be paved, you guys aren't having to make the reach ahead of them and say, well, if they're okay with it, we're okay with it. The, the risk of that is if you're, if you're going ahead and approving the plan the way it's been presented to you, it can imply to the zoning board of appeals that you're telling them that a variance is okay. And that might not necessarily always be the case. So we generally try to have the ZBA act first so that if there's anything that's not going to be met in the zoning ordinance, the rules of the road have been rewritten before they get to you, if that makes sense. So again, it's a lot of words. I've sat through these things where you can get a site plan, the, the discussion of how site plan, special land use and variances work, that that's like a two-hour presentation. So this is very much the fast flyover. So I'm willing to go, if you've got questions now, I'm willing to go deeper into it, or if there's pieces of this that would be good to discuss in the future. Um, I'm open to that, or if we missed the target completely, and you can tell me that too, but kind of the first crack at doing a little in-house, in-house training. I'll stop talking, I'll start listening.
Oh, I, I thought it was really good, Jeff. I was just wondering if you could put that in a PDF or just send it in a PowerPoint to all of us uh, and the email. I think it'd just be a good reference point.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. And uh, we, we are recording the meeting. So the other thing we'll do is um, we'll, we'll post this so that um, I, I already had a request for city council to be able to see it after the fact. So we'll make the, we'll make it available to zoning board of appeals and city council and you guys as well.
Great. Oh, I enjoyed this. I mean, it's good to see what the rules are.
Hey, great. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good, good job, Jeff.
Thanks. Are there other things, if we were doing this in the future on a light agenda, are there other things that are sort of mystifying to anybody or topics that would be good to put together a couple of slides on?
May- maybe one thing, you know, not because I'm an engineer anyhow, and, and you and I have looked at drainage situations at the Citgo Station and also out to uh the uh Farm Bureau one out there. And that, that was a, a very intensive drainage system because they have those big um, depend, retention ponds there, and then they drain it out of there into the, go right away. Um, but you know, some of them get pretty extensive and some of them aren't so hard, but it's a fact of life.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Okay. Well, if uh along the way, either to the next meeting or we get some things on agenda in the future and, and uh, I know that I can get, I have a tendency to kind of use the terms and the phrases without explaining them sometimes. So we need to, we need to do some timeouts like this and give a little bit more information when you do that.